Hello, hello, hello. Right. G'day team. Toughy. Lots of writing. It's very easy to follow. Don't get demoralised by that, even if you're having a quick gander at it now. Basically, sort of four pieces. Three of them are eight-minute pieces and then one's a 2K piece at the end. Okay, now, I used to like doing pieces like this. Sort of building up, not that I'm gonna do one, but this is a great way to do it. Building up to like 2K stuff, so if you're gonna do like a 2K piece. It's like a progressive or like a building piece. So I'm gonna jump to that right now, talk about it, okay? So the last piece is a 2K. And what happens is we start the first 500 around 30-32 rate. And then we go in the second 500, we go up to 32-34 rate. Third 500 is like 34-36 rate, so it's pretty much getting close to race pace. Final 500, race pace, okay? And we wanna try and hold your target 2K pace. Now, if we do it properly, if we do it properly, we end up only about 12 seconds behind our 2K time, okay? And so that's the idea. Otherwise, we end up around sort of 20 to 24 seconds. It's not bad, okay? But what we're doing is we're just trying to figure out our progression, seeing where we get to, plus we've had all of this at the start, okay? So we've had this whole sort of workout beforehand, okay? Now, don't be put off and think, "Crikey, there's a lot of stuff up there", okay? Because if we're starting to get, if we think about it, yes, there's sort of 24 minutes of work in there, but really, it's only sort of this part here, like 2, 4, 6, probably like 10, 10 minutes of it are gonna be actually like at quite a medium to high intensity. There's only about 2 to 3 minutes at the end of that third one that's actually at quite a high intensity. So the rest of it's actually just warming our bodies up. Now, there's two sides to this. One is, it's a good chance to like have a bust-out and see what we can do, especially in the last K of this, okay? See if we can hit or get really close to like our 2K time. And the other part of it too is that we started doing this because we were finding we weren't actually doing enough warm-up, okay? So what might happen is you might do this, jump into this and do a pretty good time. You might do the 12 seconds, because ultimately, if that's your number, that's 2 seconds above 4 seconds, 6 seconds, there's your 12 seconds, right? So if I use a 7-minute pace, that's a 1:45, that's a 1:47, it's a 1:40, uh, sorry, yeah, that's a 1:47, it's a 1:49, and ultimately, that's 1:51. Okay, so, but the whole idea behind it is, yeah, it's only 12 seconds slower than if you were going for like a 7-minute pace, 2K, okay? And if you're a 6-minute person, which, I'm gonna aim for 6 minutes, obviously, that's a 1:30, 1:32, 1:34, 1:36, which is a 12-second thing. So the first part, you know, because that's 10 seconds above your sort of pace, it shouldn't be that difficult. Well, it's gonna be tough, but we wanna find a rhythm. It's not like you're having to max every stroke and try and hold that on for 3 or 4 minutes, you know, for that 1000 metres. It's slightly back off it, it's 90 to 95, probably 95%. And we wanna find a rhythm, find it, and it gives us a chance to have a little bit of clarity, to work into it, to go, "Okay, how do I feel? Am I breathing properly? Am I holding my pace? How's my rating? Does it feel easy?". You know, all of these questions that are coming into your mind. So when you actually do go into a 2K pace, you can try and have that same clarity, but at that number, okay? That's why we're doing it. And ultimately, as was said, I still don't think people do enough warm-up stuff going into a 2K, you know? And what you might find is something like this might actually be what you do for your warm-up going into it. You know, I quite often just did that sort of 10 minutes building up pace and then there was a minute or 2 minutes at a certain rating, a little bit of a break, go up again, 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 again. You know, ultimately, we did quite a bit on the bike as well, but I found doing some sort of things like this building over, you know, 4 or 5 minutes, then bringing it back down, doing it again, going back up and down over a period of time actually really helped. So, yeah, let's... It's not too much other than that than I can explain, except don't be put off by these first 3 pieces being, thinking that it's gonna take a lot away from you, because it won't. It'll just get us warmed up into a good position, because ultimately, once you start getting fit, you're gonna produce your best work when you're warm and after you've done a pretty decent warm-up. And I tell you what, you'll find, you know, if you start doing pieces or repeats or 500-metre bursts, that type of thing, your first and second ones aren't always gonna be the best. You know, you might find if you're doing 10 of them, number 8, 9, 10, you know, as you're getting closer to that finish, they're gonna be the ones that are gonna be the best, because that's when you are fully warmed up, you're fully cranking it out and, you know, you're pushing some really good numbers, okay? So, trust me, trust me, honestly, I reckon that number 4 when we do that, I'd love to see your feedback and set a time, okay? So I'm gonna be very, very adventurous. And so I'm gonna set my 6-minute time, okay? Even though, I'm not sure. I'll definitely know once I start getting towards in those 30-32s and I'm doing my practice pieces as to what I think I can hold. And then ultimately, yep, we're gonna have a good nudge. And as I say, because you're building into it, you're not going flat-tack right from the word go. You're building, you're increasing. It's this whole progression that I always talk about. When you start at 20 rating, you got 22, 24, 26, 28. And our speed, yes, it's not linear, you know? We start getting exponential towards the end where, you know, you're trying to, you gotta add heaps more power to get slightly more speed. But same philosophy down here at this sort of ratings, okay? Is, yeah, looking for good numbers, then looking for a little bit better, a little bit better, freeing it up, trying to stay focused, trying to move along with it, okay? So, also have a play with your drag, you know? See what you wanna do for like a race piece. Even if you change it between these, you think, "Okay, well, maybe between the second and the third one, I might change it 5, might change it half a number. You know, I'm feeling like I'm actually really rating it easy, so maybe I need a bit more power. Maybe I don't, maybe I need to like free it up a bit, because I'm struggling with my rating." Yeah, so ultimately, looking at that side of things as well. But, other than that, let's do it. I'm looking forward to it, actually. I'm quite looking forward to that last part, but obviously, to get to that last part, we're gonna do the first part. And I haven't even really described that. 2 minutes, you can see the ratings. 3-minute break in between, okay? So there's plenty of rest. We'll breathe it in, we'll get to about a minute to go and then we'll actually start to put a little bit of power on. So we won't just like rest the whole way. We'll actually start to do a bit of active before the end of that. First one, second one, just up 2 points, third one up 2 points. But the last 2 minutes of that third one, we're just gonna skip and go minute, minute. So 24, 26, 28, and then a minute at 30, minute 32. Then we have our 3-minute rest and then boom into 2K. So what we need to do is we need to set up a variable interval on our machine and we do 3 intervals at time and then we do 1 interval on distance, which is gonna be that last 2000 metres. Now, I know that we're gonna all get out of sync in that last part. You know, there's probably gonna be some people that beat me. I hope there's a lot of people out there that'll beat me. And then a lot of you will not get close to it. So we'll just have to play that by ear. It might just mean that you gotta just stay focused, you gotta keep doing it. And hopefully, I'll run through at least another minute or so after I'm finished. And I'm gonna talk a little bit, but it'll just be one-word stuff. Just enough to keep it ticking over and give you a little bit of help and a little bit of insight and just mental focus points, you know? Spin the hands from the front. Hang, push, push, you know, swing, push, swing, heads up, face, you know, relax. Just little one-word things like that, because I'm on a berg. You know, yes, there's motivation at certain times when you can be yelling and screaming. That's probably about 600 metres to go when you're like, and anything that you can do, because you're right at your max limit. But before that, I'm not a big fan of people standing there giving me a sermon. You know, like talking through saying, "Yeah, it's going really well, yeah, yeah, keep focused on this, keep focused on this", because you're like, "Shut up, I'm focused, this is me in this machine. I can hear all the other noise around me that's going on. Just one words, round the front, relax, heads up, breathe". You know, just little things like that, I think, are really good focus and a really good way of getting good benefit, because it's just key points, you know? What a key point means to me when I talk about hand speed is I'm moving my hands quick around the back. You know, when I talk about round the front, I'm talking about moving the hands around the front, also coming up onto the feet, feeling that change in direction. So there's 3 things that I actually think about when I'm talking about round the front. You know, and when I think loose arms or when I say hang, what I'm meaning by the hang is I'm meaning, right, I don't wanna feel that, I wanna feel underneath here, I really wanna almost feel like my arms get pulled out of the socket as I push away. So one word can mean quite a big description, okay? And so that's the one thing, is that unless someone's standing there giving me that whole description, I wanna know what that one word means and I focus on it for 2, 3, 4, 5 strokes, 6 strokes, you know? Got it, got it, did it change? How did it make me feel? Do I feel better? Did I get more speed? Did I get no more speed? What else do I need to focus? You know, just things like that. So that's what I'll be doing in that last part. Shit, I went way too long about that. Okay, right, now that we've had all of that, I don't feel like I'm warmed up anymore, but do a couple of minutes. Do 2 or 3 minutes just to get going and then we're just gonna be straight into that 20, 22, 24, 26. Good break in between. As I say, it's, yeah, she'll be fine. Trust me, honestly, trust me if you can. Sure you do trust me. Hands up if you don't trust me, because I'm pretty sure I'm fine. Right, here we go, okay? So, select workout. We want a new workout, we want an intervals and we want a variable, okay? Now, the first one's gonna be a time and it's just gonna be 8 minutes, 8 by 3. 8 by 3. Yep, and then the second one, just press okay. And then the third one is time again, we press okay. Then the fourth one, we click the distance. And we want to skip back, turn that to 2K and then basically get into it. And the rest time at the end, leave it to 3 minutes, doesn't really matter, just easier to change it, okay? So we do that, no more intervals. Let's go. Let us be friends. Let us be friends, let us rock and roll. Okay, I'm really hoping, actually, before I do that, I might just add a little bit more, add a little bit more tape to the foot. There we go. Seeing as I'm a barefooted monster, probably like a Bigfoot. Bigfoot's probably the best word description. Okay, right, there we go, done. Oh, that's nice, that's nice, feels nice. Okay, no more intervals, no more intervals, here we go. Right into it, let's just build into it over these first few. Start getting them warmed up into it, ready to, ready now this 2K at the finish, okay? Let's do it. Rock and roll, are you ready? Go. They're sitting nice and tall. Doing that push. Loose. Really nice. Feel the hang. Feel the body. Really good. From the front. Sitting tall. Right, ready to change now. Acceleration. Good hand speed. The rhythm. Really nice. Breathing. Looking for the length. Feel that push. Lie back. Through the hips. Taking a change now. Acceleration. Breathing. Where's the hands? The rhythm. Good speed. Sitting relaxed. We get a good push from the front, we just hang. Speed through. Tap it along. Now. Where's the hands? Good. Elastic link. Good, breathe. Sitting tall. Remember, warming into it. Relaxation. The toe. Heads up. Good. Good, good first piece. Don't be alarmed if you think, "Oh my god, that felt really hard", okay? We did get into it reasonably quickly, unless you'd done quite a big warm-up beforehand. And when I say big warm-up, you know, built into it. Whereas I'd sat there for 10 minutes after I had done a bit of a warm-up, talking to you guys. And ultimately, yeah, it was like, "Oh, hello, hello 24, hello 26". But even now, heart rate's right back down. Just starting to feel the pressure again on the hang. So really good. So look at the numbers, look at the splits. Start working it out a little bit in your head as well and what you wanna aim to do, okay? Because the time we get to that third set, that 28-30 will give us a really good idea, a good number of what we wanna do. You know, and if you are feeling a bit tired, you think you're gonna struggle, then ultimately, that first piece might have to be 6 to 8 seconds slower than your race pace, okay? And so therefore, that 2K piece ends up being closer to that 20 seconds above time, okay? But ultimately, we're still trying to get as close to that race pace towards the end, so that we feel that fatigue, we try and have that clarity, we try and have that relaxation, okay? As we get down to that real hard, intense work. That's the whole idea. So that if we can have clarity, we can have clarity for 3/4, 7/8 of the piece, we can transfer that clarity into a 2K time, where we need to have it for at least the first 1000, first 1500, you know? Yes, we will be on our limits while we're doing it, but ultimately, trying to be as relaxed as possible. So let's do it, start the firm, moving to that. 22. Tap it along. Yep. Good. Speed through. Looking for length. Remember, trying to create it off the front. Leaks. Drive the body. Good swing. Good focus. Good intensity. Both feet. For that elastic link. Changing. Here we go. Now. Speed through. Breathe. Find the rhythm. Head. Round the front. My mention. Breathe. Good fight, that's good rhythm. Heads up. Breathe. Find that rhythm. Pressure. Hang. Right, acceleration. We change. Now. Heads up. Head up. Good. The leg connection. Where's the hands? Good. Good focus. Good feet. The nature. Good momentum. Moving. Yeah. Step. Find the groove. Body. Clean speed. Breathe. Control. Composure. Keep it long. Work and rest. Sitting tall. Hang. Good. Nice. So. Heart rate's starting to get up, which is good. We're going to manage this next piece. We're going to be free. We're going to look for our progression. We're going to sit up. We've got to be nice. Nice and focused. Just remember, let's get this, this one done. Okay, we break down to two minutes. Because ultimately, the last piece we're going to do, I would say for the majority, should be quite a bit quicker. Okay? Anywhere from 6 to 8 minutes. So, maybe a few people, older people, inexperienced or ladies, who might be pushing that 8 minutes or more for that 2K, that's fine. Absolutely fine. That's what we're trying to work towards. We're trying to figure out where your where your, I guess, expectations are versus your realities. Because that's the other part we've got to do as well. It's hard to do a 2K. Really hard. Okay, mentally it's hard. But also, the only way to figure out what your 2K is, is do a 2K. Okay, but this gets pretty close. As I say, this gets pretty close. And it's something that we want to do because we want to test ourselves. And this workout in between is going to be able to do that. So. I'm drinking now because I'm not going to drink in my next break. Okay, so this piece. And just remember as well, those ratings are only a real guide. Okay? So. Yes, I've got 36 there. Why? Well, I'm only using my experience at 34 to 36 is pretty general 2K pace for most rollers around the world. Okay, if it's not you, if you think your maximum's going to be 32, then let's work one or two back every time. So, even in these pieces, you might be thinking, "Crikey, 32, that's pretty hard for me". So, just manage it. Figure it out yourself. So this is 22211. Okay, starting at 24. Here we go. Now. Remember tap it along. Build into it. Get the rate and the rhythm. And then push the numbers down. Breathing. Accelerate. Good. Momentum. Angelum. Good. Good focus. Tap it. On the front. Work, rest. Accelerate. Moving. Now. Feel the hand. Swing. Sitting tall. Round the front. Compress. Push. Nice. Breathe. Momentum. Good. Good focus. Feel the hand. Tap it along. From the front. With the hand. Now. Good change. Yep. Good hand. Clarity. Push. Sitting tall. Breathe. Hang. Both feet. The front. Tap. Feel the push. Now. Good. Moving. Freedom. Head up. Change. Yep. Hang. Swing. Tall. Really good. Fue. Nice. So. Roll it out. Breathing. Okay, have a, have a think to yourselves. I was pretty much one split slower than I wanted to. But about one point of rate also for this first piece. Okay? So. Have a think to yourselves, see where you're going to start. Remember, remember. We've got to commit. Got to commit. Okay, if we fade through the second half, don't worry about it. But we've got to commit. Try and find that increase in speed. Okay? Looking for that increase in speed. It's going to be tough. No one said it'll ever be easy. We're probably going to have to start firming it with about 20, 20 seconds to go. So just over a minute. So focus on the details. Hey, focus on the technique. Focus on the rhythm. Focus on the hang. Focus on the push. Remember, work and rest. The idea. Yes, we're working hard, but not ridiculous in this first K. Okay? And then it starts to get quicker. Okay, so. If you think you can, 6, 4, 2, 0 pace. Okay? If you think you might struggle, 8, 6, 4, 2. Okay? Let's do that. Let's do that together. Where they hit the ground running on this piece. It's only 2K. Remember, get onto the rhythm and then tap it along. Okay? Moving. Yep. Swing. Tall. Breathe. Tap. Breathe. Tap it. Front. Tall. Hey. Push. Swing. Breathe. Good. Good. Parity. Good. Keep it going. Tap it along. Move the hands. Breathe. Sitting tall. Focus. Relax the face. Keep the push. Swing. Tap and swing. Tap and swing. Yeah. Move the hands. Spin them. Keep it up. Commit. Give it a push. Give it a push. Suck in it. Big breath. Free it up and push, push. Legs body. Legs body. Count it down. Swing. Push, swing. Push, swing. Free the hands, move the hands. Tap it along. All right. Keep moving. We're shooming. Everyone's pretty close to finish, okay? So we keep moving. Wind it out. Alright, nice. It's harder than I thought. Nah. My speed for this K was good, just couldn't keep it down. Couldn't keep it down. That's fine, okay? Evaluate. How'd you feel? Did you manage it? Did you slow? Did you feel a bit of focus? You know, break, break it up. You know, I found that first five hundred really easy. Second five, I struggled to, just press menu, clear it into the memory. The second five, I couldn't quite spin the hands quick enough and I only got like a point of speed quicker. And I had to sit on it, cause I felt it would be too forced. And I only really gained another point, maybe a little bit more in that third five. And then I just couldn't move the hands quick enough, okay? Just couldn't, couldn't create the momentum of the swing to be able to move the hands. So I had to sit on that thirty-three rate and only really finished up on thirty-four, so not bad, you know? The thing with this is we can look at it and go, okay, seventeen seconds, not bad, okay? Could I make seventeen seconds up if I did a one-off? Eh, probably, you know? I'd like to think I could. I think realistically, probably be maybe a six oh six at the moment for me, instead of a six minute. So, you know, maybe if I sat on a one thirty-two and then let it go towards the finish, that would be my, uh, my ultimate. But the biggest thing is, without just going out and doing a 2K, we don't know where we're at, okay? And ultimately, 2Ks, especially in the rowing world, see even now, like I feel pretty good. Um, ultimately, I'm gonna do a good warm down on a bike in a minute, but ultimately, 2K's mean a lot for anyone else. A 2K is one of the hardest things you'll ever do, probably, if you do it properly. And yes, you'll fail many times, many attempts at doing it. But then as you learn how good you are, how fit you are, you'll get benchmarks, you'll get really good personal bests all the time, okay? And when we're trying to look at how fast we can go in a 2K, keep warming down if you're still doing it, guys. Um, so ultimately, what I talk about, we've gotta touch on some high rate, but we just can't stay there all the time. This is the same. As we build into it, as we progress into it, we find out what we can hold. You know, can we hold that for the last five hundred metres? Does that mean that our last kilometre is three seconds slower than we'd normally do, three or four seconds slower than we'd normally do in a, in a 2K? But the first part of it, it's been twelve, fourteen seconds slower. Okay, so we're building into it and then we're producing that lactate and stuff at the end of it. But it's only really three and a bit minutes, you know, whatever at that finish, so it's not a huge amount, it's not gonna blow us out. Um, you know, you, you'll feel pretty good tomorrow, you won't feel like overly done. And that's what we wanna do. If we are feeling really overly done, maybe we need to be a little bit more realistic, pull our expectations back a little bit, which is what I wanna do, which is what I, I need to do, but I'm not going to do. Uh, I'd just rather suffer a little bit more. Um, because ultimately, yes, we're just trying to hit some numbers. Man, look at me, I'm steaming. Um, yes, it's cold here in New Zealand at the moment. Um, yes, we do have to target something. The best way is to target something and to be vulnerable, okay? Be vulnerable. Fail, fail. See if you can fail. Push yourself and go, whoa, if I keep holding this, I'm gonna die. Yep, okay. Can I suck it up though? Can I actually beat myself? That's the ability of a really good athlete is to be vulnerable, to try and fail all the time. Like that there, I knew I was never gonna hit six minute pace, cause I just haven't been doing enough. Um, but ultimately, I was trying to do it and yes, I was failing. But you've gotta be all right with failure, okay? You've gotta be all right with failure. There's no shame in it. If people shame you about it, you're gonna be a stronger person because of it, okay? And that's your vulnerability coming out. So always look to see if you can fail. I would rather have, and a coach would rather see somebody go out, hold a six minute pace of fifteen hundred metres, boom, blow up, finish on six minutes twenty, you know? But they'll look back on it and go, that was impressive. I really liked what you did. Because ultimately, they wanna know that you're willing to go to that level. Okay, so for something like this, yes, we're willing to just test ourselves, see where we can get to. And ultimately, we're testing our 2K pace, our own expectations, our own realistic expectations, should I say, and seeing if we can hit it. So I'd love to hear your comments in the section. I'd love to know what you set out to hit and were you, what were you between? Were you between twelve and twenty seconds? You know, if you betted twelve, awesome, you know, shit, you've got a good 2K coming up. Um, if you were quite a bit outside of the twenty, let's talk about it, okay? Let's talk about it. Ask a few questions and we'll see what we can get. Um, but ultimately, that, that workout time really gives you a good knowledge of, of where you're at, okay? So, good warm down. Keep warming down. Keep working it for five or ten minutes. Um, I'm gonna jump on my bike. Why? Because I love the bike and I can watch some cricket at the same time. Yes, there's cricket on and if people don't know what cricket is, you're obviously living in America or somewhere else where you haven't had the privilege of watching a cricket match. Okay, awesome. Thanks, team. Uh, tune in again. Love to see your comments on that one. Um, until next time. Nailed it.